Good morning and welcome. At this time, I call to order Muskogee Creek National Council, regular session, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Time is eleven oh-five. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Todd Parker to come forward and do the invocation. If you have the song, you're welcome to see it.
Pastor. And again, um, uh, I just want to thank the Muskogee Tribe for, for all that they do. I'm going to go to the Lord in prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you, Father, for all that you do for each and every one of us. Father, again, uh, we just praise you, love you for the rain that you bring this morning, the thunder and the lightning, Father. It's you, Father, that, that does that. And we just ask that you bless, bless this meeting, Father. Uh, do your will and guide each individual, Father. Again, it's you that we come to. We ask that you give each, each, uh, area representative, show them love, show them mercy, Father. Again, it's, uh, you that we come to, you that we give all the thanks to, Father. Father, guide them, give them wisdom, give them strength, comfort them. And the, the folks that are in the audience, Father, I, I lift them up to you, Father, that you would bless them, Father. Again, we went through a, a hard year, Father, yet you were there. Father, the loss of a, of a deacon, the loss of a, of a pastor, Father, I, I, I thank you, Father, that I was able to know Brother Don Tager and Jim Gibbons, Father. I ask that you, you bless their families, Father. And anyone that lost loved ones this past, past year, Father, I, I ask that you comfort them, Father. Give them strength. Most of all, Father, we thank you that you allow us to be here, breathe in your air, feel in that rain on our skin, and the thunder that we can hear. We give it all to you, and I ask that you bless this nation. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor. Roll call, let, let clerk trace away.
Speaker Randall Hicks.
Present.
Mary Crawford.
Present.
Joyce Dear.
Present.
Patrick Freeman.
Here.
Joseph Hicks.
Here.
Robert Hough.
Present.
James Jennings.
Here.
Adam Jones.
Here.
William Lau.
Here.
Anna Marshall.
Present.
Charles McHenry.
Here.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Present.
Gerald Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Lucian Tiger.
Present.
Speaker, you have fifteen present and zero absent.
Fifteen present and zero absent constitutes a quorum. All business conducted will be official. Approval of minutes. Extraordinary session, May four, twenty twenty-one. Planned in session, May eighteen, twenty twenty-one. Emergency session, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Free agenda, regular session, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Speaker, make a motion to approve all minutes with any changes necessary.
Motion made by Representative Lowe to approve the minutes with any corrections as needed. Do I have second? Second by Representative Marshall. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
William Lau.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Gerald Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Dear.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Hough.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor and zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion passes. Let me back up here and introduce some of our dignitaries that we have present. At this time, I'd like to welcome and introduce our Principal Chief, David W. Hill. You'd stand and be recognized, please. Second Chief, Dell Beaver. Miss Muskogee Creek Nation, Claudia McHenry. Junior Miss Muskogee Nation, Gabrielle Noriega. And thank you, citizens that are here present, cabinet members, and live stream viewers. Okay. Now we are down to order of business. NCR twenty-one zero six six. Of zero six six.
Zero zero six, sorry.
A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek National Council censoring Muskogee Creek National Council Representative Travis Scott. Sponsors Patrick Freeman, Jr., co-sponsors James Jennings, Adam Jones, III, Joyce Dear, Anna Marshall.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Freeman, Freeman made a motion to adopt NCR twenty-one zero zero six. Do I have second?
Second.
Second by Representative Dear. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Patrick Freeman, Jr. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Hough.
No.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Lau.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Gerald Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Dear.
Yes.
Speaker, you have thirteen in favor and one against.
Thirteen in favor, one against. That motion is adopted. ER twenty-one zero eight zero. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending TR nineteen dash zero seven six. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation to suspend all special appropriations and donations, as amended by TR twenty dash one five zero. Sponsors James Jennings.
Thank you, Speaker. I'll make a motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt TR twenty-one zero eight zero.
Second.
Second. Seconded by Representative Lowe. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. ER twenty-one zero eight five. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation approving the absentee workers for the twenty twenty-one Muskogee Creek Nation primary and general election. Sponsors James Jennings.
Speaker, I'll make a motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt TR twenty-one zero eight five. Do I have second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Lowe. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. ER twenty-one zero eight six. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a certain agreement between the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health and Zoom Video Communications, Inc., on behalf of the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsors Mary Crawford.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Crawford made a motion to adopt TR twenty-one zero eight six. Do I have second? Seconded by Representative Dear. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. ER twenty-one zero eight seven. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a certain agreement between the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health and XPS Ship LLC, on behalf of the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsors Mary Crawford.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Crawford made a motion to adopt TR twenty-one zero eight seven. Seconded by Representative Dear. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. ER twenty-one zero eight eight. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a certain agreement between the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health and Google LLC, on behalf of the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsors Mary Crawford.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Crawford made a motion to adopt TR twenty-one zero eight eight. Seconded by Representative Dear. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. ER twenty-one zero eight nine. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a certain agreement between the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health and Cox Business, on behalf of the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsors Mary Crawford.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Crawford made a motion to adopt TR twenty-one zero eight nine. Seconded by Representative Dear. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. ER twenty-one zero nine zero. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation confirming the, the nomination of Kayla Hargill to serve as the Secretary of Education, Employment and Training of the Muskogee Creek Nation. Sponsors Joyce Dear.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Dear made a motion to adopt TR twenty-one zero nine zero. Do I have second? Seconded by Representative Crawford. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Joyce Dear.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
No.
Robert Hough.
Yes.
James Jennings. Adam Jones.
No.
William Lau.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Gerald Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
No.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Speaker, I have ten in favor and five against. Oh, wait, that's not right. Four, four against, I'm sorry.
Ten in favor, four against. That motion is adopted. Ms. Hargill, stand and be recognized, please. ER twenty-one zero nine three. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a memorandum of agreement between the Muskogee Creek Nation and the Indian Health Service for the construction, improvement, and installation and rehabilitation of domestic water supply and water waste disposal facilities for forty Native American homes in Creek, Hughes, Mays, McIntosh, Muskogee, Okfuski, Okmoge, Rogers, Seminole, Tulsa, and Wagner Counties, Oklahoma. Sponsors Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Hala Osborne made a motion to adopt TR twenty-one zero nine three. Seconded by Representative Marshall. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. ER twenty-one zero nine four. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a memorandum of understanding regarding archeo- archaeological site one CAL ninety and Ram Oxford Hospitality, Hospitality LLC Hotel Development, Oxford, Calhoun County, Alabama. Sponsors Charles McHenry.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative McHenry made a motion to adopt TR twenty-one zero nine four. Do I have second? Seconded by Representative Randolph. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. ER twenty-one zero nine six. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a contract accepting a donation of land located in Hughes County, Oklahoma. Sponsors Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Hala Osborne made a motion to adopt TR twenty-one zero nine six. Seconded by Representative Marshall. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. ER twenty-one zero nine nine. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a business operation lease regarding the Duck Creek Indian Community Smoke Shop. Sponsors James Jennings, co-sponsors William Lowe.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt TR twenty-one zero nine nine.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Lowe. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. ER twenty-one one zero zero. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing Principal Chief to execute a business operation lease regarding the Muskogee Indian Community Smoke Shop. Sponsors Joyce Dear, co-sponsored Mary Crawford.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Dear made a motion to adopt ER twenty-one one zero zero. Seconded by Representative Crawford. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. ER twenty-one one zero one. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing both an adaptive management plan for wetland mitigation credits and a mitigation credit sales agreement with Honey Springs Mitigation Bank for the River Spirit Casino Improvement Project. Sponsors President Patrick Freeman, Jr.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Freeman made a motion to adopt TR twenty-one one zero one. Seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. ER twenty-one one zero two. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a quick confirmation agreement with Hilton Dallas Lincoln Center for the Muskogee Creek Nation at Large Gathering. Sponsors Mary Crawford.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Crawford made a motion to adopt TR twenty-one one zero two. Do I have second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Dear. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one zero five five. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a special appropriation for the Duck Creek Indian Community. Sponsors James Jennings.
Speaker, I'll make a motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one zero five five. Do I have second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Lowe. Discussion.
Thank. Thank you, Speaker. Yes.
Representative Jennings.
It, it's just a, a, been a long process. It was June the second of twenty sixteen when Duck Creek entered into an agreement with, uh, Mr. Boswell for him to operate the, the smoke shop. And he's never been able to open due to different circumstances with the nation. And, uh, if you don't mind, Second Chief, would you like to speak on this beat up, please?
Good morning, Council. Um, as Representative Jennings said, this has been a, really, a, a long time coming. Um, when the Duck Creek Indian Community first, uh, went into their agreement with Mr. Boswell, which is five years ago, um, to my knowledge, they have not received one check yet from that agreement. And it wasn't at the fault of Mr. Boswell, it's really at the fault of the feet of the nation. Um, whether it be a property line issue, um, whether it be a DOT issue that we had to go, they had to, uh, create a new in and out, uh, access for that property. Whether it be the, the, the processing plant that we put in, um, there's always a reason why the smoke shop could not operate, and it was mainly, um, at the fault of the nation. And so we met with Duck Creek Indian Community, um, we invited them here this, this morning. Um, they can't be here this morning because, uh, they're dancing this weekend, and so they had to prepare for the dances. Um, but, um, but really, we're just trying to make a right with the community. Um, and so this appropriation, um, would make a right with the community of the lost revenue that they have experienced, um, by not being able to open their smoke shop. And so with this lost revenue, um, they've had to quit some of the services they provided for the, for the citizens in that area, in that community. And so hopefully with this, um, with this, uh, appropriation, they'll be able to, um, start up some of those services, um, to help our citizens in that community. Um, Mr. Jennings, do I, did I go over just about everything? I'm trying to.
Yeah, yes. I mean, e- even with the, uh, highway project, we, we had to reach out to the community of Winchester for their approval, to get their approval. We, we couldn't ever find the mayor or anyone to sign off on it for six, eight months. So it's just been a big mess. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Representative Jennings. Councilors, are there any more discussion for Second Chief or any questions? Speaker.
Representative Tiger.
Thank you, Speaker. Uh, Second Chief Beaver, you just stated that it was twenty sixteen is when they entered into agreement with Mr. Boswell.
I believe so.
I think that's right. And then twenty sixteen, I'm sorry, twenty sixteen, so that'd be five years, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Minimum of two thousand a month, twenty-four thousand a year would be a hundred and twenty thousand. Right? So if we're, if we're reimbursing for lost smoke shop monies, we're reimbursing for lost smoke shop monies, that would be, on the minimum, should be a hundred and twenty thousand instead of a hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, at the, uh, at the meeting we went to, um, Mr. Jennings, do you, do you remember, uh, why it went up to a hundred and eighty thousand? I can't really exactly remember why.
No, I don't.
Um, was it also because, uh, we extended it out to October? So, um, because that's when the smoke shop is going to open is in October. And so we added on to that. Um, and there was, I can't, I, to be honest with you, I can't remember why it was a hundred and eighty thousand. Um, but if you want to just do the math and do two thousand a month and reduce it down to whatever the math would be, I'm sure the community would be okay with that.
That'd be up to the sponsor. I just was trying to make the numbers work.
Yeah, I, I, to be honest with you, I, I can't remember what the, I can't recall the conversation, why we made it one eighty. Um, I know we extended it out to October, that's when the, the, the date of the open of the smoke shop was. Um, but I know that don't add up to one eighty, you know? So, um, um, I wish I could recall why it was one eighty, but.
All right. Thank you, Second Chief. Thank you, Speaker. Thank you, Representative Tiger. Any other discussion? Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Second Chief.
Roll call vote, please.
James Jennings. Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Lau.
Yes.
Anna Marshall. McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Gerald Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Dear.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Hough.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor and zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one zero five eight. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of the Department of Health and Human Services Administration for children and family, ser- children and families. Mary Lee Allen Promoting Safe and Stable Families Program funds for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nations Children and Family Services Administration, CFSA. Sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one zero five eight. Do I have second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Hala Osborne. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Gerald Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Dear.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Hough.
Yes.
James Jennings. Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Lau.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor and zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one zero five nine. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from a CARES Act Emergency Medical Services Grant for the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one zero five nine. Do I have second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Hala Osborne. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Gerald Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Dear.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Hough.
Yes.
James Jennings. Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Lau.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor and zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one zero six zero. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a budget modification in excess of ten percent for the food distribution program. Sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one zero six zero. Do I have second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Hicks. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Gerald Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Dear.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Hough.
Yes.
James Jennings. Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Lau.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor and zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one zero six one. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from an AARP grant to the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsors Joyce Dear.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Dear made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one zero six one. Seconded by Representative Crawford. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Joyce Dear.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Hough.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Lau.
Yes.
Anna Marshall. Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hella Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 14 in favor and zero against?
14 in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA 21 062. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of 2021 NACD Technical Assistance Grant Funds awarded from the National Association of Conservation Districts NACD for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Conservation District, sponsors Charles McHenry. Speaker, make a motion to adopt. Representative McHenry made a motion to adopt NCA 21 062, seconded by Representative Randolph, discussion. Any discussion? Hearing now, roll call vote, please.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hella Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings. Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall. Speaker, you have 14 in favor and zero against?
14 in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA 21 063. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of computer aided scheduling dispatch and wireless technologies inflammation project grant funds awarded from the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Tribal Transportation Program, sponsors Charles McHenry. Make a motion to adopt. Representative, Representative McHenry made a motion to adopt NCA 21 063, seconded by Representative Randolph, discussion. Any discussion? Hearing now, roll call vote, please.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hella Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings. Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 14 in favor and zero against?
14 in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA 21 064. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation appropriating funds to be used to accept donated real property and transactional costs related to accepting donated real property located in Hughes County, Oklahoma, sponsors Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne.
Speaker motion to adopt.
Representative Yehola Osborne made a motion to adopt NCA 21 064. Seconded by Representative Marshall, discussion. Any discussion? Hearing now, roll call vote, please.
Thomas Senior Hella Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 13 in favor and one against?
13 in favor, one against, that motion is adopted. NCA 21 065. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of the Native CDFI Small Business Support Grant Program Funds for the Owee Steeze Corporation for the benefit of the Muskogee Loan Fund, sponsors Adam Jones III.
Thank you, Speaker, motion adopt.
Representative Jones made a motion to adopt NCA 21 065, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Hicks, discussion. Any discussion? Hearing now, roll call vote, please.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hella Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings. Speaker, you have 14 in favor and zero against?
14 in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA 21 069. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a supplemental appropriation for the Muskogee Creek Nation Office of the Attorney General, sponsors Adam Jones III.
Thank you, Speaker, motion adopt.
Representative Jones made a motion to adopt NCA 21 069, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Jennings, discussion.
Speaker. Thank you, Speaker. Attorney General Wiley, shouldn't this have been amended to $29,999? Don't you already have $500,000? You already had $500,000 from a previous appropriation, so didn't you, that you said you already had?
No, they were gonna move that appropriation, they were gonna fund this supplemental appropriation with that $500,000.
So much you don't know, with that already being in their budget, does it still need to be the 529 number, or does it need to be 29999? Still needs to be the 529999? Thank you very much for clarification, thank you, Mr. Wiley. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Tiger. Any other discussion? Hearing now, roll call vote, please.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hella Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 14 in favor and zero against?
14 in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA 21 070. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Muskogee Creek Nation Light Horse Department for fiscal year 2021, sponsors Randall Hicks. Representative Huff made a motion to adopt NCA 21 070.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Tiger, discussion. Any discussion? Hearing now, roll call vote, please.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hella Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 14 in favor and zero against?
14 in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA 21 071. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCNCA Title 35, Chapter 7, entitled Disaster Act and authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Disaster Assistance Fiscal Year 2021 Budget, sponsors Adam Jones III.
Thank you, Speaker, motion adopt.
Representative Jones made a motion to adopt NCA 21 071, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Second Speaker Proctor, discussion. Any discussion?
Speaker, Speaker, do have a question, or a comment. This will retroact and help citizens that had any type of disaster all the way back to fiscal year starting October 1, 2020.
Okay.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Jones. Any other discussion? Hearing now, roll call vote, please.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall. Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hella Osborne. Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings. Speaker, you have 14 in favor and zero against?
14 in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. Mr. Darnell, what would be the funding source for that?
Speaker, funding is available for this NCA from the interest on permanent fund.
Interest on permanent fund, thank you, sir. NCA 21 077. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds from the United States Department of the Treasury to, to establish the COVID-19 Impact Relief Individual Assistance Program. Sponsors Lucian Tiger III, co-sponsors Mary Crawford, Joyce Steer, Patrick Freeman Jr., Joe Hicks, Randall Hicks, Robert Huff, James Jennings, Adam Jones III, William Low, Anna Marshall, Charles McHenry, and Daryl Proctor.
Speaker motion to adopt.
Representative Tiger made a motion to adopt NCA 21 077, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Huff, discussion.
Speaker.
Representative Tiger.
Thank you. Representative Low.
Yes, I have a question for the sponsor. Representative Tiger, would you consider changing the language from, or to the citizens that are already in the citizenship process? Or, excuse me, I want to, my motion or the question is, would you consider the language being the citizens have, I'm trying to think of what you're saying, I'm getting confused here, the ability to become citizens by the end of this fiscal year?
Yes, Representative Low, so the language would need to read, if I am correct, every Muskogee citizen as of September 30, 2021?
Yes.
I would second that motion. Speaker, that would be line 16, page 3. Every Muskogee Creek citizen as of September 30, 2021, strike June 26.
September, September what?
30, September.
Okay, so the motion on the floor by Representative Low is to strike line 16 on page 3, strike June 26, 2021, and add September 30, 2021. Seconded by Representative Tiger, any discussion?
Speaker.
Representative Yehola Osborne.
Yes, I have a question for Ms. Tara Branson Thomas, please.
Good morning, Ms. Branson, or afternoon?
Good morning, Ms. Branson. Um, is allowable cost the guidelines for this money?
Speaker, there's a motion on the floor right now to address the amendment first.
Okay. The motion was, on the floor was to strike June 26. Change it to September 30, seconded by Representative Tiger. Roll call vote, please.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hella Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 14 in favor and zero against?
14 in favor, zero against, June 26, 2021, has been restricted and replaced with September 30, 2021. Back to the motion to adopt NCA 21 077 as amended, discussion. Representative Yehola.
Yes, sir, thank you, Ms. Branson Thomas.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is this allowable under the guidelines to approve?
Uh, the current rule is an interim final rule from the Department of Treasury, which is open for public comment until July 11. I suspect that after comments are accepted by the Department of Treasury, a final rule will be issued between 30 and 60 days after those comments are read and reviewed by the Department of Treasury. So we're likely not to have a final rule on the expenditure of these funds until early fall. As the current guidelines read, in consultation with the consultant that the National Council brought on board, it's unclear whether or not this would be an allowable expense, and so our position previously has been very conservative on the allowability of a per citizen distribution. Obviously, if legislation is passed today, the executive branch will do its best to mitigate risk, uh, nation. But today, in this position, I would say it's a position to move forward without a final guideline from Treasury. And I guess I bring that up because Treasury has already issued several iterations of their frequently asked questions that would support the interim guidance. Uh, in the last week, we've received four revisions to that frequently asked question, and none of them have made the question about a direct payment to every citizen being an eligible expense, if anything, it has sort of muddied the water further.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Yehola Osborne. Representative Randolph, do you have a question?
Question. If, um, money's allocated and then they find that, you know, we can't do that, how are we gonna pay for it? As for any of the sponsors?
Representative Tiger?
Thank you, Representative Randolph. Again, if we were to have to repay that, I've done the numbers because I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, this is for, so far the interpretation reads low to moderate income, is that correct? So right now, we have approximately 84 to 86% of the information that you've received from your survey that's came back, that we, 84 to 86% of our citizens are low to moderate income so far, correct? Thank you, so with those numbers, Representative Randolph, if something were to change, and we were to have to reimburse somewhere that, out of the 183 proposed in the legislation, that would be 29.28 million, that would need to go back, and that, the only place we'd have to bring that from would be the permanent fund. And with that also being said, also, you have the, we're the fourth largest tribe in the country. We have the second largest tribe in the country that's already implemented this program to their citizens. So I think that this is something that would be beneficial to all of our citizens, because everyone, regardless of your income, whether you're low, moderate, or high, has always, have all been affected from COVID. Thank you, Representative Randolph.
Thank you, thank you, Speaker. Thank you, thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Tiger, and Representative Randolph. Any other discussion? Representative Huff.
Given what you said, Ms. Branson, that, you know, that maybe within sixty days that, uh, they will have final rulings, you know, but based on what we have interim rulings on it, it's probably going to here, it says we have a hundred and twenty days to, you know, uh, implement it, implement it. So if we went and passed this today and we find out a month from now that it doesn't fall in that category, we could always come back and make, make a new legislation to avoid that, I guess.
Yes, I would say that's one advantage of the way legislation is currently written, that if there are changes or clarifications, um, the executive branch can bring an additional amendment to this or correspond with you all, um, to make sure that we stay in compliance with the rule. I think I read the legislation this morning, it looks like a hundred and twenty days, um, before we have to launch. Uh, I think our goal would be to be ready sooner than that. Uh, we know that direct assistance and economic relief is a critical, uh, need in our community. And so we were already preparing, um, and, and in discussions with you all to be able to do something. Uh, so I think we'll be positioned, and if changes are made, we'll certainly come to you with those, uh, with that information.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Representative Huff. Any other? Representative Proctor.
I believe we have, uh, Ms. Horn on the line.
Ms. Horn, are you on the line? Ms. Lacy Horn.
Can you?
Ma'am.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, sir.
Have you been hearing the discussion?
Yes, I have.
Uh, what are your thoughts on, uh, what, what's been discussed already and the question that's been asked?
So I apologize for sort of joining in and out of this meeting. My, my father-in-law is in the hospital and I had to jump off and take a call for my son. So I joined, um, during Representative Low's, um, suggested striking of Ju- June twenty-sixth through to, um, September thirtieth. So at that point in time, I've, uh, been listening to the conversation. And so I received the draft of this legislation yesterday, and I can say that I was a bit surprised to see this. Um, I do know that the, uh, executive branch has been working on a direct assistance program, and I know that National Council is very interested in the direct assistance program. And so we've been having a lot of conversations about what a cash assistance to households allowable program could look like. And so, um, in reviewing the legislation and understanding that there is, um, quite a bit of co-sponsors on this legislation that are interested in moving forward with this immediately, I offered a few of my thoughts to, uh, sort of help frame this up because what this legislation is doing is it's, and I'll just sort of walk through the legislation and make, make some points about it, but the, uh, National Council in section, uh, one, one oh one A is, is acknowledging that, uh, there is impacts from COVID-nineteen and there is a immediate need to stabilize households, or actually acknowledging that this is what the American Rescue Plan is here to do, is to, um, stabilize households and businesses impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And then in B, you are developing spending plans and compliance with the American Rescue Plan Act. And so, you know, we've, we've been having lots of conversations about different ideas that National Council is interested in and the executive branch about what some of those allowable uses would be. And so you are, you are committed to developing your spending plans and compliance. And so, um, so per, per item C, pursuant to the ARPA interim rule and FAQs, a recipient, which in this case is the tribe, can design programs. And we have specific language about enabling, in, in the ARPA, um, interim rule and the, and the FAQs about enabling disadvantaged populations to respond to the negative economic impacts of the pandemic. And earlier this week, we were, uh, privy to some preliminary citizen survey results that indicated that at least eighty-four percent are low to moderate income, which the, uh, cash assistance to households interim rule specifically states that, um, assistance to, let me pull it here, um, but it is, it is, a recipient may presume that a household or a population that experienced unemployment or increased food or housing insecurity or is low to moderate income experienced negative economic impacts resulting from the pandemic. And so we're sort of acknowledging and, um, leaning into the understanding that Treasury has as far as cash assistance to household with the interim rule is concerned. And in D, you are believing that individual direct assistance is of utmost importance to respond to the long-term economic impacts for citizens and families. And so you're just stating that you, uh, see this as a need. The executive branch is developing a program. And so in, in this, this, the way this is written, this leads me to believe that further justifications can be built out and included in, uh, program documentations for this program. And so to me, this gives, gives a little bit of leeway in addition to, um, the hundred and twenty days that, that is, um, that is acknowledged further down below in section three B, uh, because the, the hundred and twenty days would give, um, a little bit of wiggle room here on, on allowing for greater clarification coming from Treasury. You know, as Secretary Branson Thomas mentioned, you know, we had, um, we had several updates within a very short period of time on the FAQs last week. And so, you know, the, as I, as I discussed with you on Monday, the ground on this is, is shifting. And so, you know, all, you know, all, all the decision, all the decisions being made at this point in time are being made based upon interim, uh, on an interim rule that is subject to a comment period as well as frequently asked questions. And so, you know, I've, I've just wanted to caveat any, um, any guidance that, that you, you read currently or interpretations that you get from me that in the future, this may change. And so I feel that the hundred and twenty days gives, gives a bit of flexibility to understand what a, um, what a final rule might look like, as well as I understand that the executive branch is working on a build-out of electronic infrastructure to support applications and payments to reduce the administrative burden and to help streamline. And so you are, you are including a requirement to apply, and I, and I feel that that is, that is very clear from the interim rule, that an application is necessary, that, um, an individual who is applying for this assistance would need to, um, apply and to, um, um, and or submit information that, uh, shows the economic need associated with the request for assistance. And so, uh, that is all, that is all, um, program infrastructure that could be built out in the backend. And so to me, what this legislation does is it, is it sort of creates the shell of a program for which the executive branch would be helping to create greater, um, structure with, within, still, still remaining within the American Rescue Plan, uh, guidelines and, um, and requirements that are associated with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Thank you, Second Speaker. Any other discussion? Representative Jennings.
Thank you, Speaker. So, Ms. Horn, are you saying that everyone will have to apply?
Yes. That is, that is the, that is what is being stated in your legislation, is eligible to apply pursuant to section three A. And that is, that, that is required in the, um, interim rule. So let me just go right here. So the recipient must consider, and I'm reading from the interim rule, a recipient must consider whether and the extent to which the household has experienced a negative economic impact from the pandemic. And as, and, and I've already read the second sentence to you, but, but you are required to have an application. So taking, and I'm just going to use an example, but if you took your citizenship role, your current citizenship role as it existed on September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and you had, you know, you had bank account information for every single citizen on the roles as of that point in time, um, you could not just make a two thousand dollar payment to every single person on the roles at that point in time. Um, and I've, and I've heard references to the program at Cherokee, um, even Cherokee has, has some level of an application process, opt-in process, that is, that is a part of their program. But I think that there are ways to, um, to still have that opt-in program and I think enhance it for compliance purposes based upon the updates to the interim rule and FAQ, or based upon the updates to the FAQs that we've seen so far.
Thank you. Thanks, Speaker. Thank you, Representative Jennings. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
I'm Senior Hall Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor and zero against?
Fourteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. That concludes the order of business. Next item on the agenda is other business. Is there any other business? Any other business? Hearing Mr. Smith's, Mr. Smith's counsel. I do have one from, uh, Representative Freeman. A fundraiser bingo for Joanne Powell, Hanson Hicks, July third, five P M. Uh, location is one, 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 two, South Woody Guthrie, next door to the Okeema Casino, which would be the Nutrition Center. Any other announcements? Speaker. Representative Jennings.
Thank you, Speaker. I was just going to announce that the, uh, inner tribal golf tournament is going to be held at Forest Ridge on, uh, July the seventh. There's been some changes in the agenda. They were going to register at eight, but it's been moved back to seven o'clock. Uh, it's forty-dollar entry fee and, uh, no denim shorts and, uh, have to have a colored shirt. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Any other announcements? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Representative Tiger made a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Seconded by Representative McHenry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned, twelve oh six.